Evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Today is Tuesday, November 12th. We rescheduled the meeting to this date because of Election Day last week. We're excited you're joining us here today. I want to remind everyone here, we do film, so this will be streamed on YouTube and also here in the courtroom for everyone who's present. So please do speak into the microphone when you address the board so that your comments can be caught up. So I'll call this meeting to order, and we'll begin with an invocation by Pastor Chris Booth from the Crossing Church. Some of you may know him from his previous tenure at the YMCA. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you. Let us pray together. Gracious heavenly Father, we are indeed a blessed people. And God, I humbly and I very proudly, Lord, come to you tonight in gratefulness for this body who has chosen to keep prayer a part of their proceedings. I'm thankful for this town. I'm thankful for the leaders. I'm thankful for the people who choose to acknowledge you, for you say in your word, if we acknowledge you before man, you will acknowledge us before your Father. And so, Father, I am so grateful that we get to acknowledge you tonight. Lord, we want to lift up every man and woman who represents the town of Kernersville. We thank you for the calling that you have placed upon their lives. And God, we pray that as they seek wisdom and discernment for the many decisions that have to be made on a daily basis, we pray, Lord, that they would reach to you for guidance. We would pray that they would seek your wisdom, that they would want to do things that would be in standing with how you would want them to lead. God, I pray that you would pour out those things to them, that they seek it, and that you would do so in such a way that they would know it would come from you. Lord, we ask that tonight, all the things that we do and say honor you. And Lord, we ask that you continue to bless this town as we look to the future. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which states, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I have a few cards from people who would like to address the board about either the public hearing or other agenda items. If you have not filled out a speaker card and would like to do so, the cards are at the back of the room, and they can be given to our town manager and town attorney here at this front table. If you do that, I'll be able to recognize you in turn. All right, so our agendas are online and also on the screen, and we have printed copies in the back of the room. Our first item is a public hearing. When an agenda item is denoted as a public hearing, persons attended shall be permitted to address the Board of Aldermen regarding the item under consideration. Those speaking in favor, speaking first, and those opposed, speaking second. Proponents and opponents shall each be given 20 minutes of time to speak. In the event that either proponents or opponents have not designated speakers, speakers to represent their views, the mayor shall divide the 20 minutes by the number of speakers wishing to address the board. After the opponents speak, the mayor will allow the proponents five minutes for rebuttal. If proponents choose to exercise this option, the opponents will also have five minutes for rebuttal. In the event the proponents do not present rebuttal, then the opponents shall be given no further time to speak. So our first item is a public hearing. Mark Folk, agent for owners, for a single-phase conditional rezoning, zoning docket K-819 for property located northeast of Brookford Road, with the PIN numbers and description as included on the agenda. I'll begin by recognizing our community development director, Catherine Garner, for a presentation by staff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Board. Our presentation tonight for K-819, Mark Folk is the agent, applicant is room at the end, and the owner is Scott Pope, Blue Diamond Investment Company, and the town of Kernersville. The proposed zoning amendment is for Medical Business Park and General Industrial to General Office Conditional. The sum total of all of the parcels is just shy of 45 acres. The applicant has three main proposed uses: institutional and vocational training facility, defined as a facility for the vocational training of individuals who are economically disadvantaged or have physical or mental disabilities. The facility may contain uses to support training activities such as offices, classrooms, retail sales, and light manufacturing activities. Church or religious institution neighborhood scale is the second proposed use. A church or religious institution in which the seating capacity and sanctuary or main activity area is 600 persons or less. And finally, child daycare center, a daycare facility in which daycare is provided for 13 or more children when any child is preschool age, or 16 or more children when all children are school-aged. This site is off of Brookford Road and Kernersville Medical Parkway, kind of in between NC-66 and Kernersville Medical Parkway off of Brookford. The zoning in the surrounding areas, general industrial, residential multifamily conditional, medical business park, general office conditional, residential single-family, and general industrial. Just on the other side of the west fork of the Deep River, which is on the eastern side of this property, is the parcels that were rezoned last year, I believe, for the apartments and the office buildings coming off of Little John Road off of Macy Grove. So the area to be developed is bordered by three fixed features. There's two parcels that are owned by the town and intended for road construction at the north and the west, and then the west fork of the Deep River at the east. You can see it roughly bounded by the blue lines on the screen at the far left, and then the road right away is at the top and the west of the site. The buildings to be developed are situated around a courtyard with parking surrounding the buildings and the courtyard. The site is currently designated within the industrial corridor overlay district. When the overlay districts were originally created, this area was intended to be more of an industrial park area. The VA Hospital and Novant Hospital have balanced the mix of commercial and office users with industrial and logistics users in southeastern Kernersville. Staff finds that the highway corridor overlay district more appropriate for consistency with the development on the east side of the Deep River on the same Loop Road thoroughfare, if approved. The highway corridor overlay requires building and site design minimum standards, which will have to be met at the time of permit application if approved. Some of the biggest constraints with this project are the road improvements. The primary parcel to be developed is bounded on the north and west by parcels owned by the town for road development as identified in the thoroughfare and street plan. The western road is a minor thoroughfare, and the northern road is a major thoroughfare. It's the Shields Road extension that would connect to the Loop Road, or it would connect from Shields Road through this Loop Road to the Macy Grove, which is part of the greater Loop Road around Kernersville. The project to the east or the northeast, the office and multifamily, will be constructing part of that road. You can see it coming off of Macy Grove headed back down towards the Deep River. The Shields Road Loop Road is a major thoroughfare connecting 66 to Macy Grove Road and would be a nice balance to Kernersville Medical Parkway in keeping truck traffic and then traffic from the new rec center off of 66 or other industrial drive or Kernersville Medical Parkway in distributing trips. The eastern portion has been designed and approved by NCDOT with the rezoning for the parcels to the east. So there is a design, there is a cross-section, and it has been approved by NCDOT. Our thoroughfare and street plan defines minor thoroughfares as a street which serves as a primary traffic artery of an urban area, serving the major centers of activity and carrying traffic between such centers at a moderate speed. The design shall not only include addressing the level of service and capacity of a road, but consider design in the context of surrounding land uses and address the multimodal transportation needs of all potential users. Access to abutting property may be provided, however, the primary function is to carry traffic versus providing property access. The thoroughfare classification also carries traffic between major thoroughfares. Access is primarily provided by at-grade intersections which may be signal-controlled. This is the Brookford Road extension that would be required to access the site as it is currently landlocked. The major thoroughfare definition is a thoroughfare that carries large volumes of traffic. The design shall not only include addressing the level of service and capacity of a road, but consider design in the context of the surrounding land uses and address the multimodal transportation needs of all potential users. Access onto the facility is controlled. Access should be only at intersections with other streets. Such intersections should be spaced at intervals which promote traffic progression with the absolute minimal delays incurred. This would be the Kernersville Loop Road, the Shields Road extension going out to Macy Grove. The developer has shown the major and minor thoroughfares on the site plan and is only proposing to build the western road in order to access the site since it's currently landlocked. The developer has placed a note on the face of the site plan stating that the Shields Road extension shown for future reference only and is not proposed to be designed and constructed as part of this rezoning request. Disher will provide a fee in lieu of, as a contribution to the future design and construction relating to the future Shields Road extension project. No proposed construction or utility tie-ins within the Shields Road right-of-way is proposed as part of the rezoning petition. Staff understands that the horizon for connection to the large transportation network is not imminent, yet good traffic planning requires anticipation of future needs in order to take incremental steps. And staff cannot take anyone's ability to pay into consideration of expectations of the development. This was discussed extensively at Planning Board, and it was told to them, and it's up to your purview as to whether or not that's something you wish to consider, but staff did not make that consideration as part of the staff report. Just that Macy Grove is on a 2030 horizon for widening by DOT, including a potential new access to I-40. So there are movements towards improving the road network out there, and this would be an important linkage in that network. Changing gears to the land use plan, this area is designated as a business center, which is intended to accommodate a wide variety of employment uses such as office, research, corporate park, and institutional and related uses. Requires a unified design scheme, including enhanced facades on the buildings, substantial surrounding landscaping, restrictive site lighting and signage, and full screening of loading areas, and permits no outdoor storage. This site is also located within the Medical Business Park Small Area Plan and is adjacent to the I-40 NC-66 interchange northeast quadrant node identified in the land use plan. So the Medical Business Park Small Area Plan was intended to create a hospital and a limited amount of commercial offices and retail uses in a concentrated area. The goal was to limit the traffic and prevent big-box retail centers despite the proximity to the major thoroughfares. This furthered the Business Center land use designation, which focuses on employment generators of office, research, and corporate parks. The adjacent I-40 NC-66 interchange northeast quadrant was developed from the I-40 NC-66 corridor study completed in the early 90s, which recommended the northeast quadrant be utilized for corporate park and industrial-type land uses due to visibility and access. And that development pattern has held true in this area. Property is located within the west fork of the Deep River watershed, which has regulated buffers and floodplains. The project includes a stormwater control measure with the anticipation that additional development will occur in the future, creating a high-density stormwater development. The total proposed constructed built-upon area for the phase of the project is 18.4%. And a detailed stormwater management plan will be required by the town's watershed and stormwater regulations if approved. The staff summary is that social service organizations that support vulnerable populations are important to the community's workforce continuity. Yet, this location does not fit the community's vision for southeast Kernersville as identified in the land use plan and is not in compliance with the thoroughfare and street plan. The Medical Business Park node and the I-40 NC-66 interchange northeast quadrant node and Business Center designations support industrial-type developments, and the thoroughfare and street plan supports road construction as part of an adjacent development project in order to incrementally build the infrastructure needed for the growth in the community. Staff's recommendation, as presented at Planning Board and in the staff report, was to deny the requested rezoning in the amendment to the Unified Development Ordinance in case KA-19, finding it was inconsistent with the comprehensive plan and being both not in the public interest because of the following: The uses are not consistent with the Business Center designation and Medical Business Park node as identified in the land use plan, and the applicant has requested not to construct the roads as proposed in the thoroughfare and streets plan, which then requires the public to shoulder the cost of the road construction, which is contrary to applied practice. Planning Board presented the motion that I'll go through on the screen, and I've given you a paper copy. It was also in the Planning Board report. Planning Board made the motion to amend the Unified Development Ordinance of the town by rezoning the properties in case KA-819 from Medical Business Park and General Industrial to General Office Conditional, finding the rezoning was inconsistent with the town's comprehensive plan, but both reasonable and in the public interest because of the following: The petitioner requested a conditional district rezoning to limit the uses on the site in order to more closely preserve the intent of the Medical Business Park node. The developer will design and construct the Brookford Road extension or minor thoroughfare as shown on the thoroughfare and streets plan in order to access the site, and the use adds a job readiness-focused social service provider to the community to support the workforce continuum in Kernersville. The conditions were provided to the applicant at the Planning Board meeting, and I believe there was consent to those conditions as proposed by the Planning Board, so the land uses would be limited to institutional and vocational training facility, church or religious institution, neighborhood, and child daycare center. The highway corridor overlay district standards would apply to parcels bordered by the future right-of-way for the Shields Road extension and Kernersville Loop Road. Brookford Road extension shall be designed in accordance with the NCDOT Comprehensive Transportation Plan, NCDOT Design Standards, and the town of Kernersville's thoroughfare and street plan, and NCDOT would have to approve the road design prior to the approval of site construction drawings. Any additional right-of-way needed for the construction of the Brookford Road extension shall be dedicated to the town of Kernersville prior to building permits being issued. The NCDOT driveway permits are required for all accesses on a Brookford Road, and all NCDOT improvements required as part of the driveway permit approval process shall be constructed as part of the project. Unless prevented by topographical features, internal connections between parking lots are required and shall be constructed, and street names shall be approved by the town of Kernersville prior to final plat. The developer shall adhere to all state, federal, and local government environmental regulations, and all stormwater control measures shall be designed and constructed outside of the 100-year floodplain. The site shall be developed to minimize impacts to the floodplain to the maximum extent practical. Any floodplain fill over 25% of the flood fringe area will require review and approval again by the Board of Aldermen. Public water and sewer extension shall be reviewed and approved by Winston-Salem Forsyth County Utilities prior to construction plan approval. Lighting for the project shall be designed to provide adequate pedestrian lighting and dissipate at the property line, and light fixtures shall be downward-directed full cutoff. Street yards along both right-of-ways shall follow the requirements of the highway corridor overlay district, and a full landscaping plan would be provided at the time of civil construction documents submittal. Voluntary annexation petition shall be submitted prior to the release of construction documents for any parcels within the town of Kernersville extraterritorial jurisdiction, and the civil engineering plans for the single-phase rezoning submitted shall be consistent with the site plan prepared by MLA Group and was part of your packet. The Planning Board vote was an interesting one. The first motion in favor of denial failed, and then the second motion, as just presented, passed on a 4-3 vote. Be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Are there any questions to Ms. Garner at this time?
Catherine, just to be clear for folks who are listening in the audience and online, the Planning Board recommended that the application not be approved in its preliminary form. Is that correct?
The first motion made was that of staff. So the Planning Board first made the motion to deny the rezoning, and that motion failed. So then they made the second motion, which was to approve it with the conditions that I just went over, and I've given you all a paper copy of, because I know the font is very small on the slideshow.
Okay, so with these conditions, the Planning Board recommended approval.
Yes, with a 4-3 vote.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Are any of the uses overnight residential?
Not in the form of a shelter. With the institutional and vocational training facility, they are proposing some overnight lodging for staff, but not in terms of a shelter for their clients.
And that's included within institutional and vocational as a use?
Because the definition said the facility may contain uses to support the training activities such as, we determined that that probably would be included to have onsite residential for staff to the facility.
Okay, thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. I'll declare the public hearing open. I'll first recognize those speaking in favor. I have signed up to speak, Albert Hodges and Scott Miller. Go right ahead. How much time do you need, Mr. Hodges?
Two minutes.
Okay, go right ahead.
My name is Albert Hodges, president of Rubik's Company, and it's ministry company of schools, crack and lemon, and single mothers and children. I will tell you, this is the first time I've ever had to go through a process like this. I'm experienced in applying, with meeting, in the neighborhood, wanting to talk to the public, and, and work with city staff and the community to address them. And I was especially gratified that the Planning Board accepted, and we accepted their conditional change, the conditions they wanted to allow us to develop the program as we wanted to, the project as we wanted to. So I was grateful to have all their support. And I'm here if you have any questions for what we'd like to do. And I would, uh, thank you very much for considering what we'd like to do for these young women and children. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. My name is Scott Miller. I am landscape architect and president of MLA Design Group in Winston-Salem. My address is 5603 Hunley Road in Winston-Salem, 27106. I would just like to make myself available specifically regarding any technical questions that you may have or, or questions regarding the plan. As Albert mentioned, we've been working on this for a long time. It's been almost a year now that we've been in front of staff and, and neighborhood, neighbors and that kind of thing. And we appreciate your consideration, the staff's time, and once again, here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else here to speak in favor? And at this point, you don't have to have signed up with a card in advance if there's anyone else here in favor. All right. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Is there discussion by the board or a vote? Or questions of staff or questions of anyone in the room here?
Madam Mayor, I have a question for Ms. Garner. I know that at some point, there've been concerns about the extent of the paving requirement for the road and for the extension. Can you sort of summarize that for us? Perhaps the difference between the conditions imposed by the Planning Board and what was originally proposed by the petitioner?
Sure. So the, let me get back to their site plan. So their site plan shows the parcels that we own that were intended for right-of-way, but they don't show roads on both of them. The one at the top, which kind of looks like a big swoosh that's going across the top, that is the Shields Road Loop Extension that they are not proposing to build, but donate $250,000 in lieu of to the town to hold until such time that we wanted to build the road. Just as, as an aside on that, if that's something that you decide you're interested in, you would want to add that to the Planning Board's motion, because Planning Board didn't consider that as part of their, as part of their motion. So Planning Board's motion would be for the adoption of this site plan with the roads that they are and are not showing. So they are showing the one coming off of Brookford, which looks like a comma coming up off of Brookford. And then there's the swoosh that goes across the top. That, the big one, is the one that would not be constructed. And then the smaller road, our, our big elongated comma, they would be constructing that because they need it in order to access the site. So they have to build something there in order to access the site. But they are not proposing to build the road, the Shields Road Loop Extension. So staff's recommendation was denial because it doesn't fit with the transportation, the thoroughfare and street plan and the practice we've had of requiring developers to build the portions of the road that are adjacent to their site. We had extensive conversations about building portions of Shield, that Shields Road part, because the developer to the east of the creek is not building all the way to the creek, just because landing a bridge on both sides of the creek would require a little bit of coordination. So we said build it to the furthest extent that makes sense, thinking that this side would also build to the furthest extent that makes sense. And then we would put it on a state funding plan to be able to construct the bridge with NCOD, NC DOT assistance at some point and make that full connection. But we had extensive conversation about it, and it was not something that they felt was feasible for them. And so that's why they have submitted it, showing no road and the note about the $250,000 fee in lieu.
So the, the comma that you're referring to is the curvature to the, to the west side of this?
Yes. On the, on the right side of the, or the left side of the page. Yes.
That's what I pointed.
Yes.
Can you point it out on the, the screen maybe? Might be easier to.
I've discovered that my mouse doesn't work, so I'm over there, you know, doing the mouse, and y'all don't see it. This is the Shields Road extension.
Ms. Garner, that explains a lot.
And then, or this is the Brookford extension, and then this is the Shields Road extension at the top.
So in more detail and follow-up to Mr. Apple's question, are they building the part between their entrance road and the future Shields Road or not?
I believe yes. Yes. So they would bring this Brookford extension from Brookford Road, which is just off the screen here, all the way up to here, and that's where it would stop.
And the 250, if the board imposes that, or if the board includes that as a condition, would be towards building the big swoosh?
Yes.
And, um, Mr. Hodges, if you could stand up a minute?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you, since this wasn't in the Planning Board conditions, is that something that you're, you're consenting to or offering the $250,000 towards the construction of that road?
Yes, ma'am. My understanding was that it was the Alderman's decision, but we did tell them we would consent to that, yes, if y'all decided to do that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Proceed, please. Bill, did you have any more questions about the map before Catherine moves?
I did, Catherine. If, I'm, I guess what I would be interested in knowing is if this were any developer, that the town were going to expend paving money for contiguous to or flowing out of a proposed development, what would we require if this were a, another developer?
What would we require of that developer? Or what would we do for that developer?
Well, let's talk about both. Let's start by what would we require of that developer?
Okay. Most of the projects that we've had that have required road improvements, either improvements to the existing network or the thoroughfare in front of their property, they are required to bear the full cost of the construction of that, that work. You can think of Caleb's Creek, Weldon, any of the projects that have to do widenings and turn lanes where they may not have to do significant, like extensive work, but they've got to make improvements. Holt Environments on North Main had to put in a turn lane. John Deere's done some road improvements. They, they pay for those road improvements.
And also Alderman Apple, the, I think Catherine mentioned it earlier, their apartments that you all just approved on the east side of the creek, built the other side of this road that was approved last year.
It hasn't been constructed yet, but yes, it is on their plans that when they come in, they will be expected to build that same, I think it's a three-lane with a deceleration lane as part of this advancing the thoroughfare and street plan.
So that, that would interface the eastern end of this, northeastern end of this?
Yes. This road, it's not quite tall enough, right up there would go over the West Fork of the Deep River and then connect on the other side to their road. And then you'd be able to drive, one day, you come up Brookford Road, and then you could get all the way to Macy Grove.
Is there a bridge involved?
That is what the town said when we were in discussion on rezoning with the property to the east side, thinking of this other connection point, that we would say build it to a certain point, and then we would submit the plans to NC DOT for transportation funding to make that connection when the two endpoints were known, rather than trying to build it not knowing where it's going on the other side.
So did the town on the parcel for the construction that's to take place over Deep River on the other side, on the eastern side, did the town contribute anything toward the cost of that extension?
Not to my recollection.
Okay. What I'm concerned, my questions obviously are directed toward, I don't think we, I think it would be difficult for us to require different requirements based on who the applicant is. We've got to look at the, you know, the overall comprehensive plan for the street and thoroughfare plan for the town. And, and I don't think we, we can require any more than we would require another developer with a different name, but I also am concerned about our requiring any less, regardless of the merits of the project. Thank you.
Don't move yet. I got a question for you. How many people are going to be living in those apartments on the other side?
I think there were 600 apartments approved on the other side.
There was a second rezoning, though, and I thought it was fewer after the second rezoning. I agree with you about the 600.
It's five to 600 then.
Oh, that meant, I'm sure it was 600.
I mean, I could look it up if you really wanted to know the exact number. It did reduce slightly when they came back for that second rezoning, but I think it's still well above 500.
Yeah, I think.
I agree with that.
I think the initial approval was about 700, and then it came down into the high five to mid 600s. And that, those guys that are doing that deal, that's a for-profit deal, right?
It is.
Yeah, they're going to be renting them out, and they need the highway for all of those people to move, correct?
They need a road. They didn't necessarily need the road that we required them to build to meet the thoroughfare plan.
And, and the deal we're looking at here tonight, KA-819, that's a, that's a non-profit deal. Is that correct?
Yes.
And, and you're not going to have 600 people coming and going every 24 hours, are you?
No, sir.
Okay. I, I think the board has to consider the fact that it is two different uses here completely. And the burden, the burden on the roadway.
Alderman Barrow, by state law, you can't differentiate whether it's a for-profit or not-for-profit in implementing the road.
Okay. Let's forget that, and let's just look at the number of people that are being used there. I appreciate that. It, it's totally different. And the burden, if they can use this piece of property without building that road, you know, it, it makes sense to me. I understand treating everybody the same, but we're not dealing with the same type of development, for lack of a better word. I don't know how many people will be coming and going from this KA-819 site, but it won't be 500 or 600 a day. And I mean, I think our, our job here is to make sure that we have the roads we need and that we treat everybody fairly in going forward. And that, that's my two cents worth. And if they can get in and out without building that road, I'm not so sure I don't have a prob, I don't have a problem with that. Thank you.
I'd like to make a point. First of all, I, I think I understand where Bill's going or Alderman Apple's going with the fact of being consistent.
Mr. Thompson, if you could speak into your mic.
With the fact of being consistent with any developer who comes in for a project like this. But to your point, John, I think it makes sense that you've got a developer on the upper side that's built for density, knowing he could afford this property to, or he had to have that density to be able to build the road and have, and house what he's doing on that side of the, of the bridge, let's call it that. Maybe this isn't the right project for this piece of property if they're not able to build the road that's going to, that to me should be required based on staying consistent with the rest of the zoning requests or rulings we've made throughout the town, would be
Catherine, what's this road going to cost in today's dollars?
They said at Planning Board, and I will defer to Scott, but they said that this, they were anticipating this to be about $1 million, I think, what were you, for the Shields Road?
Yeah, we, we have early cost estimates that the Brookford Road section that we would construct at our expense to Town of Kernersville standards, including the, including the right-of-way, additional right-of-way that was necessary to be dedicated, that would run in about $1 million. We are also proposing there is additional right-of-way that's needed for the Shields Road extension. We are also proposing to dedicate that right-of-way at our expense, and then the additional $250,000 fee in lieu of would go towards the Shields Road connector. In our, in our opinion, and without elaborating too far on this, but in our opinion, you know, the other rezoning requests, while, while we understand the need to be fair, they built one section of road. We're building one section of road here and dedicating that road to the public at a cost of, you know, all-in of about 1.25 million on, on this project. So there, you know, each rezoning certainly has their differences, and I think we're, we're also contributing towards the infrastructure to the town as well with this project. Thank you.
May I ask a follow-up question to, to whomever would like to address it? And Ed, I don't know whether this would be you or Curtis or Catherine, but what are the factors that we can legally consider that would differentiate these two projects and how we treat the Shields Road connectivity? What, what can we, what can we consider? I guess, you know, I'm told that you can't consider the, who it is, or whether it's a profit, for-profit or non-profit. What, what can we consider? What are some of the factors that we could consider? They, I agree with Alderman Barrow that they're different. What differences can we recognize as we make decisions?
Alderman Barrow pointed out a, a good difference, I guess you would say. I'm not sure the best way to phrase it, but he pointed out the, I guess, the difference in, in vehicle or traffic. You certainly, in some situations, consider that whether or not a road is, is needed or not needed. You can't consider legally whether it's a non-profit or a for-profit, you know, building the road. The biggest issue here, I guess, with, with deciding the number of trips per day is that the proposal is, is for the whole thoroughfare, the road thoroughfare, the actual thoroughfare itself. The apartments built the other side of that, not necessarily because of the amount of trips generated per day from the apartments, but because it was part of the thoroughfare plan. And then if this site is ever constructed, then you have an entire thoroughfare there that is designed to carry cars from Shields Road over to Macy Grove Road, and then you would take into the, take into account the full car count using that, that thoroughfare. So yes, if it's, if this were a road in, in a neighborhood, or if this were a subdivision coming in, and you had another subdivision similar to that in a different area, one of them had 50 cars a day and the other one had 1,000, you could say, well, we don't necessarily, this road at 50 cars a day is not needed. It's a little more difficult to say that here because it's part of a thoroughfare, not just one section of it. So they built that for the apartments. Yes, Alderman Barrow is correct. It will carry more traffic, but ultimately, if this road's not constructed, if, if this project doesn't construct it and the road comes off, then they've just, they basically just built a driveway for their apartments. I would venture to guess they probably wouldn't need to build that section of road to the extent that they're going to be required to build it, they being the apartments. So that is where you can differentiate usually is, is on the car counts, but it's usually done on, when you're looking at internal roads within subdivisions or connections. We've got in our UDO reasons to not make connections, internal roads to not connect. So you would look at those factors as opposed to not doing a thoroughfare.
If we don't require of this applicant... who builds it, and how much does it cost, and where does the money come from?
If you don't require it of this applicant, I think most of the right-of-way is already there, and I've got to familiarize myself. Mark, the part, the very far part to the left, is that already dedicated to the town? Or would y'all be, y'all would be dedicating that? So the upper portion of it is already dedicated, the part right to the left up top, they would be dedicating that. The rest of it's already dedicated, I think, correct? So if, if they don't build the big portion, at some point in time, at some point in time, the, the town would be responsible for building it. There are two parcels, I think it's two or three. Do you know, Scott, whether it's two or three parcels? Two? Okay. And how about going west between there and 66? Is it two parcels? Okay.
I think it may be three.
Maybe three. So there's three parcels to the west that the town does not own any right-of-way. So at some point in time, to build that all the way to Highway 66, we would have to get the rest of that right-of-way. But it would be, at that point in time, this portion of it would be, would have to be constructed by the town. The three parcels to the west, it just depends. If they come here for redevelopment, and this part's already constructed, you might get the developer to do it, you could require it. If not, you could certainly get the dedication, and the town will be responsible for it. As far as cost, I think they said earlier it's about $4 million for the, for that stretch of road. Is that about right? So you're looking at $4 million in today's dollars. You know, it's a toss-up. By the time it gets, by the time we get ready to build it, I mean, if it's 2030, when DOT does the owner ramp off of Macy Grove Road, six years down the road, you're probably looking at six or seven million dollars. If it's beyond that, it'll be in excess probably of nine million dollars and up, depending on when it's built. And that's not including the, I don't think that would be including the, the stream crossing, the deep portion.
Whether, whether you are doing, we are doing it, if the town would be doing it, and let's assume that there would not be a voluntary dedication of that right-of-way, can the town, through the condemnation process, condemn and take what we need to complete thoroughfare?
Yes, you could for that.
And that requires paying, value in paying for it through the condemnation?
Yeah, you would, like we had to do before in previous cases, you would go in and get it appraised, take appraisal, then you go through the eminent domain. They challenge it, you go to court. Judge decides what the, or jury decides what the, the fair market value of that property is, and then that's what the town will pay for. Now, we'd like to say we already have part of that. We don't have the other part to the west, kind of there in the bottom part, and we don't have the, the three parcels to the west of that. And those are all, I'm thinking two of them are industrial, and one of them's probably office. So, you know, industrial land along through there's quite a bit higher than it once was. So it's hard to say. I don't know exactly how much we even need from those other three parcels, but it's a, how wide is the, the road?
I want to say 90, but I can't recall exactly.
Yes, you'd have a 90-foot wide strip, and one of those parcels to the west, I'm pretty sure the way it, if it goes the way they kind of got it designed to, to connect up there, the stub beside a Clark's BBQ, one of those parcels to the west going towards 66, you would probably take the complete parcel. I think it would be a wide enough, a wide enough strip that you would end up having to, to take the complete parcel, which at that point in time, you'd run into some money there. I mean, it's, it's not going to be an inexpensive road to construct at some point in the future.
Curtis, we don't have any way of estimating what that cost to the town might be. I mean, I know it's good to accept that 250 in good faith, but we're kind of, we'd be making the decision kind of in the blind, wouldn't we? Because we have no idea to estimate what cost would be whenever the time comes that that road be built. And we'd be stuck with a pretty sizable bill on the town.
Yeah, just that portion of it, I think when we were discussing it, the portion of it that, that they're being asked to build now is 4 million, roughly. So when it comes time, I, I mean, I couldn't tell you, it depends on when it is. You know, for an example, Big Mill Farm Road was planned back in 97, I guess, 98, somewhere in there. 26 years later, they're getting ready to, to start it. So I mean, if this one takes 26 years, what's $4 million today, maybe $15 million, you know, 26 years down the road. I just, and I can't give you a good, a good time estimate on that, I just don't know. I, I do agree, Ms. Garner, probably, when, when they look at doing some widening on Macy Grove and possible on and off ramps there at Interstate 40, they may look at doing something, but who knows? I mean, it's a toss-up.
What's the deal with the bridge? Who pays for the bridge?
The way we have, and I'm guessing the, the way that the apartments, they stopped short of the, of the creek. These folks would stop short, short of the creek, so the bridge would be the responsibility of the town or DOT at that time. We would put it on the DIT project list and see if DOT would fund it to make that connection.
And if they wouldn't, the town would have to pay for it, right?
Correct.
Or we'd have two roads and no.
They kind of stop, yeah.
Two roads to nowhere.
You'd do a hazard and put your ramp and jump over to the other.
Or you could mud it, you know, make a little butter thing there.
But we would put that on the DOT's transportation list and see if they could fund it, and I have no idea what the cost of that would be.
Is, is there any way they could fund this or similar pieces of property? Why don't we do that?
You could. We could put that on their transportation list, I guess. When Call for Projects comes out, it probably would not rank very high because of the, the traffic it carries is mostly in-town traffic going across. So it would not rank as high as some of their more regional projects, or some more, or some of their projects that are, like Big Mill Farm Road, it gets folks out to a major highway. Though this one would, ultimately, depending on what they do on Macy Grove Road, it could get them out to Macy Grove Road and on to Interstate 40 or Southern Parkway. So there's always that option to put that on the list of their Call for Projects and see how it ranks in comparison with other projects.
I, I just think there needs to be a balance somewhere from the use of the property to the, to the road. There should be a ratio there. It shouldn't be the, the same, I don't think, but then again.
Have there been other projects that we didn't follow our plan with having the developer pave this road? Have we, that makes sense?
Was your question, have there been any other projects that we've made exceptions to road construction as part of?
This big of a, yes, you had, yeah.
Not that I can think of since I've been here. We've made some modifications on internal, like residential street connections, like down at Smith Crossing and the connection to Kingswood, but that was, Kingswood or one of the others, but that was just the one street connection within that development. But I can't think of anything. Can you think of anything?
The one that comes to mind, and I think there's two, and I'm struggling to remember the second one. But the first one I know about, and I remember because I think I was actually on the board that voted for it, is, I think it's South Park Drive. Is that the main road in South Park? South Park Drive was originally scheduled to carry all the way over to Union Cross Road. And I guess it's when either the phase, and I'll ask Scott because he was on it, is it, was eliminated when the part with Bridgeport came in? Yeah, when, when they came in with a section of South Park Industrial Park where Bridgeport goes up, the board eliminated South Park Drive going up to Union Cross Road. And then there was another project that came in. I don't know that it ever got off the ground, but there was a proposal, I think it was, there were two roads maybe somehow coming out of Maston Drive and another road that would go over to Union Cross. And I think one of those was eliminated and the other one stayed. And it could have been, I think it's the road beside of Triad Baptist Church and then maybe Maston Drive. One of those in one of the projects, I think, was eliminated and the other one was not. But the project never carried through. So that's the only, that's two that I can think of. And I know for sure that South Park was because I sat on the board that voted to stop it.
I got one more question, then I'll quit beating on this dog. Let's pretend that you weren't rezoning this piece of property, okay? And somebody came in and was wanting to put, what was it, medical, medical business park in there? Would they have to build that road?
Yep, we would still have those conversations.
Even though they wouldn't be rezoning it, if they wanted to use that piece of property?
They would need to build at least one of those roads to be able to access the property because they don't have access except through the town, the parcel the town owns for right-of-way. So they would at least be building one, and then depending on the extent of their proposal, we would probably be having the same conversation with the developer.
So you're telling me that if somebody came in there and wanted to use it for medical purposes, they would have to build that $1.2 million road, right? To access it?
There is no other access without it.
Yeah.
And that's where we, and that's where we'd be starting. And then depending on the scope, then we would have conversations about the Shields Road loop.
Yeah, but I mean, what power do you have over them to make them spend that $4 million? Because it's zoned already for medical park.
Sure. It's, it's on our comprehensive thoroughfare plan, so that's where we would generate the conversation.
Well, I know the conversation, but I mean, you know, you have to make them do it. They're not going to do it unless you make them. Can you make them do it? Even though they're not asking to rezone it? This is a hypothetical question.
We would certainly try.
Okay, so the answer is no, you probably can't, is what I'm thinking. And the only reason it gives rise to this whole situation is the fact that it's being rezoned, because you got them. Okay.
In North Carolina, when you look at a rezoning, you're looking at the land use plan. Our land use plan includes our thoroughfare plan, so they go hand in hand. We can't look at one without looking at the other.
Right. Okay. Thank you, Catherine.
Any more questions, comments, or discussion by board members? Any questions by anyone, of anyone else? Yeah, you can think for a long time.
This may be the same question that Alderman Barrow just asked you, but I'm a little dense, so let me ask it for me. If there were no rezoning request for this parcel, and the Shields Road part is still part of the town's thoroughfare plan, it would be hard to answer when we might approach getting that done and getting it completed. Who would be paying for it if there were no rezoning request at all? And that may be the question John asked, I'm not sure.
I think it's hard to say, just because there's so much hypothetical to that, but depending on the scope of the project, this project goes, takes up the entire area between the two roads, so we would certainly be having a conversation about it. If the scope was much lower and it wasn't approaching both roads, then the conversation might be different. If it was just, hey, I'm here for a permit, what's it going to take, kind of conversation. But with the rezoning, like I said, in North Carolina, you're required to consider the land use plan, and our land use plan includes a road plan, so we can't consider one without the other.
I don't think you're wrong, but I think it's troubling. It's troubling. I will be, I will confess to you, it is troubling. And as the planning board recommended it, the planning board recommended that the approval be conditional upon the completion of the Shields Road portion. Is that correct?
Planning Board recommended approval with the condition of the completion of the Brookford Road extension, and then passed the decision about accepting the $250,000 fee in lieu to the Alderman.
Okay. That helps me. Thank you.
So, so Alderman Apple, in that motion that, that Catherine showed from the planning board, if the board chooses to approve it, you can, if you want to use that, that motion with those conditions, you can do so. If you want to add the $250,000 to it, you can make that as another condition below. But it, to clarify, it did not include construction of the Shield Road. It just included a portion of Brookford Road that comes up. And I think they said they would still dedicate the part to the west, correct? Yeah, they would dedicate, which is a portion we currently don't have, so they would dedicate that portion on the par, on the parcel they have to the west of, of the portion that we already have dedicated. They would dedicate another portion to that. And I think that's in the, I think that's in the motion also, isn't it?
Looks like it's condition six.
And it's on the site plan too, so with the adoption, the site plan would cover most of that.
Yeah, so you would, you would be getting another portion of the roadway they would just be dedicating. And the planning board motion is different than the motion with staff, because staff recommended denial of it.
And that recommendation is on the, on the, in the, in the staff report on page seven and eight, if you're trying to compare them.
I'm about ready to float something. And I think that I'm not, I have no idea how to word this, Catherine, but if we are going to add the $250,000 on deposit to be held for future construction costs of the Shields Road part, I'm going to float a motion that we do that, that we add that language, but that that number be 500,000 instead of 250. That may make no sense whatsoever, in which case my learned colleagues will vote it down, but I'm just going to get something on the table for us to talk about.
I think the language on that would be, you add a condition that the developer contributes an amount of $500,000 to be used for, for future construction in lieu of construction of Shields Road. In lieu of them constr, but in lieu of the developer constructing the Shields Road extension, they contribute $500,000 to the town to be used for future construction of Shields Road.
And that may make no sense whatsoever.
No, it makes sense. I mean, it's the same thing that basically they had offered, except for it was 250,000, and you're open it to 500.
Can you restate it? Because you started it one way and then ended it.
In lieu of constructing the Shields Road extension, the developer will donate 200, I mean, $500,000 to the town of Kernersville to help with the future construction of the Shields Road extension.
Could, could I interject something there? Just a thought while we're thinking about things, Bill?
Go ahead.
Instead of, if we're going to consider an amount, instead of a fixed amount, why don't we put a percentage instead of an amount? Because we don't know what that price is going to be. If we go with a 500,000. If we go with a 500,000, then we are, we could be winning, we could be losing. But if we go with a percentage, then regardless of what the costs are, we're still going to be in a good position. That's my thought. Can you do that?
That would be, we've done it, but we've only done it in the past when we knew when something was going to be constructed. If you want to say a percentage and it's, number one problem you've got is if this developer rolls out 15 years from now and that road's still not been constructed, then who do you go get the money from? The biggest thing is if you put a percentage to escalate, you got an escalation clause in it that who knows when it's going to end. So if you, if you're going for tracking purposes and accounting purposes, if you want to do a fee in lieu of, and I understand your point, you don't know what it's going to be, it's a lot easier for future, number one, you, you know who you've got right now. You know the developer, he knows here. Get the money, then just take what you've got and don't do the future escalation because that is a nightmare to track, especially if you've got a developer that, and not saying they're going anywhere, but 10, 20 years down the road, they roll out. If you want to, if you're saying you want to do it as a percentage of the cost when we build it, if the thing's up to $20 million and it hasn't been built, we go back and say we want 10%, so that's $2 million, then you're not going to be able, I mean, you're not going to be able to get it. So from our end, we would rather have a fixed amount now than try to track it in the future. But I under, what you're saying is absolutely correct. You just don't know what it will be, but for our purposes, trying to track that down in the future, another developer, if it, if this thing rolls over, it's already zoned, somebody else come back in, then you don't have the road, then you've got nobody to get anything from either.
JR, not to discount that thought at all, but from the applicant's perspective, if they're making a feasibility determination as to whether this project is a go or no go for them, from their perspective, I think they, I would, would think that they're going to need more certainty as to, you know, how do you measure whether this project is going to be feasible or not? If the total additional cost would be $4 million, you know, that's one determination, but if it's 250 or 500 or whatever number in between, they're going to be able to put pen and ink to it and determine whether this project is feasible for them or not. And that would be the contra-argument to trying to do a percentage. I just offer that as an observation.
Well, I mean, my point was, I just didn't want the town to be, you know, holding the bag for an amount of money that we don't have any idea what it's going to be.
Sure.
But if we went with percentages, where then, we don't know, but we might be in a better position when that time come.
Sure.
You know, because the cost could be, you know, a lot more than what we're thinking it's going to be right now. And we don't know when that's going to take place and that put the town in a bad situation. That's my only thought around it.
That has some merit, JR.
But on the other hand, you're putting them in that position, they wouldn't have any idea what it's going to be either. If it's something to escalate, God knows how much in the next few years. So they wouldn't know. We wouldn't know either.
What's going to be our response? What's going to be our response to the developer that hasn't finished the road on the other side of the pretend bridge? When we put a percentage number on this and then they haven't built the road and they come back in asking for their, their other percent to help them build the other, the other road that we require them to build?
Yep. My, number one, that would be difficult. My guess is probably they may come back to see you pretty soon if this road's eliminated and ask, the, the difference to, one of the differences is they actually worked the road kind of into their driveway, like going into their apartments, but they wouldn't have to do such a big driveway if, if this road's kind of eliminated on this side or delayed for a period of time. I could see them coming back, not asking you for a percentage, but asking you to change that condition regarding the road on the east side. They, again, they've worked it into their plan for their development, so they still need it so that they can get to the, to the units that's further away from Mason Grove Road, but they may not need it to be 90 foot wide or whatever it is. But it, it is, doing the percentage is, is tough. And I understand Alderman Gorm's point 100% because if it's 25 years down the road and this road's $15 million and we've gotten $500,000 now on a $4 million road, well, $500,000 on a $15 million road is not as much. But it's just too many variables to do a percentage of a, of an amount that will not be given until a later point.
Well, could I ask the, the folks, where, what caused them to come up with that amount of 250,000? What was the driving force? What was the criteria that we use to determine the price of $250,000 from the beginning? What determined that amount?
Can I recognize Mr. Miller?
What was your thought process in coming up with that amount?
Well, once again, we come back to the fairness of the, of the proposal originally, which was Brookford Road. We're spending a million dollars and we're building a road that's not necessarily to the size and scale of Shields Road, but still in terms of its length comparable to what was, was, was done on, on the other rezoning case to our northeast. As to the 250,000, that was just a number that we, that we put out there as, as an additional incentive in addition to the right of way dedication that we would be giving for the extension of Shields Road. So there wasn't, there wasn't a, a physical calculation to determine that 250,000. It was a fee in lieu of, it was an extra incentive to say, listen, we're going to build a section of road at our cost, dedicate it, dedicate the right of way, dedicate additional right of way on Shields Road. And in addition to that, knowing that you're trying to be comparable in your, in your request from one rezoning to the other, that we would, we would offer up the 250,000. I think, I think Albert could speak to the request to up that amount from 250,000 to $500,000. Obviously, that, that puts stress on the project to make the economic numbers work. And it also ups our, our investment in public infrastructure to 1.5 million, which is significant. I don't know what that, how that compares to the other rezoning, but I would, I would say it's comparable to, to what they had to spend. And once again, we wouldn't even be using Shields Road extension at all for our project, unlike the project to the northeast, which was that section, Shields Road is critical to make their access and, and such. So unless, Albert, you wanted to add anything else?
No, no, sir. If, if, we, we could make it work with the 500,000 if, if that was what you required. The only other thing I would point out, if you look at the property, is that for our purposes, we went back and redesigned it and there's nothing even up there. We're in the watershed and half of, about half the property, we can't even put anything on. And so it's, it's trees and things like that. So that road for us serves no purpose, but that $4 million price tag for us kills the project for us. It's just, I have to go out and raise the money. And it's, it's for that and I, it's just, it gets cost prohibitive for us. But thank you for your time.
Let me ask a clarifying question, Mr. Hodges. So are you saying that $500,000 fee in lieu of constructing that road would be something acceptable to the developer?
Yes, ma'am. If, if, I mean, we would, we would make it happen for that. We've spent a lot of time looking at the property. It's what we would like to do. It fits it well. The neighbors seem to like it. We have a lot of community support for it. It was just, for me, that's the first time I've been through it and building the first road, I went, wow. And so, so we've been able to work that out and then we could, came up with the, the fee in lieu of it, plus the dedication of the land. But it's, we, we would make that happen and we, we could do that, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, I would renew my motion at the $500,000 level. I don't know that it got a second.
Well, we would do it all together with the proposed rezoning.
Yes.
So the thing about the difficulty of this parcel is the fact that it is currently landlocked. There's no road to it. You know, if you're talking about something with the training buildings and potentially some residential uses, you know, it's, it's really good for public policy to have two ways to, to bring a fire engine. In fact, if there was a fire, it'd probably be about four or five fire engines and ambulances and police vehicles, you know, in response to an emergency. And if you've got a tree down or something like that, or an automobile accident or kind of other causes, you may have one of the, an access blocked. And if you only have one access, you know, the speed of response and also accessibility is a factor. So we do try to have more than one access to a development. And this is a little difficult and unusual because most of the development plans don't come as a landlocked parcel. So, you know, it's good that the board is really considering the, the land use plan and the purposes for it. And I hope also giving some thought to, you know, this, the land use plan being for the medical office park supporting areas too, and how that relates to this plan. So there's just a lot to think about in this rezoning plan or rezoning request that doesn't come up in every rezoning that we hear. So thank you for your understanding and participation in this, you know, robust discussion that the board is having. We appreciate it. Are there any more thoughts, questions, comments, concerns?
And of course, I wasn't here when y'all set up this whole thoroughfare plan and how to fund it and everything else.
You were here. We invited you to come give public comment. It has been all during the time you've lived here, John.
I'm talking about in the, way back in the beginning, I wasn't here. I wasn't on the board.
You weren't on the board, but you were invited to comment.
Well, yeah, but it didn't matter to me then. But we're, we're sitting here, we're supposed to be serving the good people of Kernersville. And we take their, we charge them taxes and we spend their money judiciously. And it seems to me that making the builders and the developers shoulder 100% of the cost of these thoroughfare plans and all this stuff y'all have drawn up, that's not fair. And it's not fair to the people of Kernersville. Now, they may be getting something that they didn't have to pay for, but they're not getting maybe what they need because it all goes back to the economics of whether it'll work out or not. And I think that's where government and taxes comes in somewhere there to make this a more fair deal. Because if you're going to work on this piece of land right here and do something with it, you got to tack $4 million onto it. You know what could be there? You know, I, I can't think of anything that could afford to be there. But we're actually restricting the usages of these pieces of property simply by requiring all of this massive amount, so many to be spent on the thoroughfare. I think we need to rethink the whole thoroughfare thing. And at some point, it doesn't need to be 100% on the developers. That's just, that's not right. We're fortunate here in Kernersville to be where we're at. People want to come here, they want to bring their businesses here. You know, they're knocking the doors down to come to Kernersville. It's a great place, but there's a lot of places that are not so fortunate and they pay money to have people come there. But that, that's just my thought as a Alderman, not as a citizen. Thank you.
Bill, do you have a motion on the floor? Did we ever do anything?
There's not been a motion.
There's no motion.
Okay.
I made that prematurely, I apologize.
You were floating an idea. That wasn't a motion for the rezoning.
Madam Mayor, if it's an appropriate time and not premature, I would make that in the form of a motion.
Okay.
That we add in, in lieu of the 250,000 contribution toward the future.
Did you want to make it 500,000?
Excuse me, five, in lieu of the 250.
So Bill, if you, if you'd like to make a motion for the rezoning, that would be the, in favor of, would be the, the sheet of paper, adding that condition.
All right.
And then if you'd like to make a motion for denial, it would be the staff's, staff report, pages seven to eight.
My motion would be to act as the planning board did with the K-819, planning board motion as presented to us tonight, with the additional condition of the deposit of the sum of $500,000 by the applicant with the town.
In lieu of?
In lieu of.
Construction.
Construction of the Shields Road thoroughfare in its entirety. I'll just, just to get something on the floor.
I second it.
Does that form of motion comply with what you had stated? Okay, thank you, Curtis.
One, one quick question. Alderman Apple said in its entirety. Do we want to say in its entirety or do we want to say in lieu of construction of a portion of the Shields Road extension?
I think that's what he intended. Is that what you intended? Because you were looking at the site plan.
I was, much more articulately stated. Mr. Clark?
We'll, we'll, we'll make a note of it that way.
I would accept that.
Mr. Powell, did you have anything on that?
No, I think we ought to make sure we get this exactly the way we wanted to.
Keith, could you read back the motion, please?
And this is what I have typed out. A motion to approve the ordinance conditions and site plan in case K-819 as recommended by the planning board with an added condition to require the developer to contribute $500,000 to be used for the future construction of the Shields Road extension in lieu of the developer constructing a portion of the Shields Road extension.
That's, that's good.
Okay.
And I second it.
Got a second by Alderman Gorm. All in favor? All opposed. I have Alderman, Mayor Pro Tem Thompson in opposition. I've got Pennix, Gorm, Apple, and Barrow in favor. When do you expect to begin your project?
When I raise another 500,000 at least.
250.
250 or 500.
Another 250.
Another 250, sorry. Yes. We're in the process of raising them.
Okay.
But we have the money for this. And.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank.
Thank you.
I'll allow it. Go ahead.
Can I just, is that all right? I want to thank you all very much. We're going to make Kernersville proud and this is the last project of my lifetime before I retire and I'm grateful for you to let it happen. God bless you.
Thank you. Make this a success. Help a lot of people. All right. Thank you. All right. Seems like it might be a good idea to take a brief recess. How about we stand recess for 10 minutes? How about we stand recess for 10 minutes? Welcome back to the regular, the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. We're glad you're joining us again after our brief recess. We'll begin now with the public session. The first item we have is speakers from the floor. And I'd like to recognize at this time Johnny Escaville. And there is a five-minute time period for addressing the board from speakers from the floor.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Johnny Escaville. I have a property here on 2320 West Mountain Street that I built a building on my property back in 2021, and it was approved for an upholstery shop. Unfortunately, I had to close it down because I was, I'm tired of doing upholstery. My wife and I, we have a business of vintage home decor that we sell online, and we would like to get permission from y'all if we can open a business on that property of mine where I build my shop. That's pretty much it, I guess.
Great, thank you. Mr. Swisher?
He would need to, I guess first step will be to file for a use and occupancy permit. Is that correct, Catherine?
I believe staff in my department have been working with Mr. Escaville about the intended use and have been guiding him through the process on getting that approval. That would be, it would be use and occupancy with Marcy Campbell unless something else was needed. But I believe there have been conversations.
So, he, he's in the process, and then if it comes up that it's not zoned, currently zoned for the use that he wishes to put there, he would need to come back through the rezoning process, similar to the many rezonings you hear all the time.
Okay, I recognize Mr. Escaville.
Yes, I just want to, we just want to open the shop three days a week, Wednesdays, Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays. That's it. We've been, I mean, we're licensed, we pay our taxes on our, on our, on our business and on, that we sell online. But I forgot what I was, I was going to ask you.
Do you have like a denial from the town?
Yeah, we've been trying for two years, trying to get a. Yeah, we've been trying for two years trying to get, get this approved. You know, I've been going down here at the permit place and they told us come over here and speak to, to y'all here, you know, but we've been getting to run around and it's been going on for two years, you know. We just wanna, you know, open a little, you know, business from home, sell, sell local, you know, instead of online because we, we ship everything on through mail and it gets real expensive, you know.
Well, we have here this, the department, the chief of the department of the community development here, and we have the town manager here. And they're saying that the town's got a set of ordinances and policies for operating a business. And I think that you were in the process of talking with Marcy Campbell about that. So where, where did that, where is that?
Well, they told us they, they were gonna call us, they never did. And we've been waiting and waiting and I come, you know, and they're just, you know, just, they're just like brush us off pretty well much, you know.
Mr. Swisher, is this something you and Ms. Garner could work on?
Yes, well, we're, just as a general reference, you're, you said the address, but what is that located near on West Mountain Street?
Right before you get your door run, you know.
On the right-hand or left-hand side?
Left-hand side, because there's a railroad tracks on the right. I'm just requesting for, you know, for zoning, just to open that little commercial, I mean, there's a lot of commercial business down that road, but.
It's 2320 Curtis.
West Mountain, yeah.
And it has his personal residence and then an accessory building.
Yeah, I built a shop there and it was approved for upholstery shop, you know. And if it was approved for upholstery shop, honestly, why I can't be approved for, for home decor, you know, we have a business called Venice Vintage Online. We just wanna sell from, from our, you know, we have, I have that building just sitting there and all that money I spend, hard work building that building, just sitting there. It's like a little house that I built myself.
Yeah, I've got it pulled up, I see where you're talking about now. I don't, I mean, we'll look into it. It might be that what he's wanting to do is does not meet the criteria for a home business and he can't do it in that location, whereas he could do the, he could do the other business there. I don't know, that's something we'll have to look into. And if it doesn't meet the criteria for a home business, I don't, is there an option to come in and rezone it?
I believe that's the extent of the conversation you've been having with Marcy and Herman. Because I think it started out with there were some non-conforming structures on the property and they worked with you to get, to bring those into compliance or some proper buildings that hadn't been properly finalized and gotten their certificate of occupancy. So I think they worked with you on that and then that's when the conversation happened about the upholstery shop going to the retail of vintage home decor. And I think the conversation that I recall left off that retail is not permitted in residential even as a home occupation if patrons are coming to the site. And so then I think they gave you the options to rezone, which would bring you to this board, similar to that last case. But we can schedule a meeting with you and Herman and Marcy and we'll all get in the same room and we'll make it very clear what your steps would be in order to make that happen.
I would appreciate it very much, but a, a quick question. I don't understand if, if, if I was allowed to open an upholstery shop, you know, I make custom beds from scratch sofas, and that the same thing as retail or, you know, selling stuff, you know, I mean, doesn't make sense to me, you know.
Our ordinance has specific definitions for what qualifies as a home occupation. And there are certain things where you're making a product for someone that is different from retail that is open to everyone. So it may have been distinguished along those lines. I don't have those records in front of me to be able to say, but I, I believe we have given you the information about how to proceed to get what you're looking for to open a retail, but we can schedule a meeting and go over that again.
And when, when would that be?
We'll call you tomorrow and we'll get something scheduled.
Okay, if not, I'll be here. All right, thank you.
Do you have his phone number in the files or do you need to get?
Yes, we will have it in the files.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next speaker from the floor I have is Jerry Collins.
Thank you, Mayor Alderman. The proposal I got is the parking lot here on North Carey Street that where Dr. Whitaker's house was and the house beside of him was his property. My youngest daughter was born in that second house. My proposal is I would like to have the board to put a plaque or sign or something there dedicating that parking lot to Dr. Whitaker for all his years of service and the babies and stuff that he's delivered in this town. Matter of fact, Joe and his children, Dr. Whitaker delivered. And I was talking to his wife, Marty, several years ago at the office. And we was talking and she said, I said, how did y'all meet? And she said, I was going to nursing school and he was becoming a doctor. And we got engaged, we got engaged. And I told him that I had to marry him on one condition. And that condition was that he never sent anybody a bill. And to this day, till the day he died, I don't think the man ever sent anybody a bill. And I thank the town and the citizens of this community. He deserves a plaque and dedication of his services for that, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm, I'm with you on that a hundred percent.
I would too, Jerry.
I think, yeah. You, you need to make sure we, we can get up with you.
Mr. Collins, could you give Curtis your phone number so we can be sure to talk with you later about this?
To figure out what we're gonna put on the plaque, right Joe?
If, Mr. Collins, if he, Mr. Collins, if you use email a lot, can we get your email address or do you, do you use email a lot? You got it? You call them? Okay, we're set. Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight. All right, is there anyone else who'd like to address the board on a topic not otherwise included on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we will move on to the next item, which is presentation by the Salem Crossing Homeowners Association. Curtis, did you have anything on this or do we start with the homeowners?
I'll just start off, I, I know what they're presenting. I think they're, they're coming up about the cars that park as you turn in, turn into Salem Crossing Road, Salem Crossing Drive, whatever it may be, especially in the morning and the afternoon with school there at Caleb's Creek. The cars are parking on the, the north and south side of Salem Crossing Road, I think that's what it is. But it is, it does cause a, an issue especially for, for the garbage trucks turning in, for other motors turning in off Tig Lane, especially fire trucks. So I think they, they've been before. The town did not do anything at the time, but I, I was out there the other day, I went by in the morning, went back by another afternoon. And I think it backs up now probably all the way down to Squires Lane. So I will tell you that from what I've witnessed, it, it is an issue out there. We can certainly, the board chooses after hearing their presentation, we can certainly put up a sign. We would probably need to word it no stopping or parking because technically they're not parking. They're in the car, cars running, they're stopping. So you're not really allowed to do that either. So we probably have an ordinance in place now that if we wanted to, we could probably go out and press the issue, but I think it would be, would be better to, to put up a sign maybe on the, the north side of Salem Crossing Road there, the same side the stop signs on with no stopping or parking from here to corner. But we'll see if that's what they're wanting, but I will tell you that, give them a little heads up and I think that's what they're wanting in the situation. At this point, probably does need some, some attention.
I'll recognize Ms. Lindsay Nagel.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
And, and just if I can say for procedure, as you go on to the next speaker, if you, if others are speaking, if you could also have, have them say their name and address. I've got your address on this card, but Ms. Nagel.
My name is Lindsay Nagel. I'm the president of the Salem Crossing HOA, and these are the other board members with me. And our names are at the bottom of the handout that we handed out for each one of you. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting us have a moment of your time tonight.
Hang on, just, hang on just a second, sorry to keep interrupting you. Keith, did you hand that out to us?
I gave it to this gentleman over here.
This is the handout?
Yes.
That she's referencing. And it's got some photos at the end of it.
We represent the Salem Crossing neighborhood. We sit on the HOA board and come before you today to ask for your help in solving a traffic and safety problem. We are the neighborhood directly across the street from Caleb's Creek Elementary School. Our neighborhood comprises of 104 homes and we stand here today representing most of the homer, homeowners at about 70% as we do have a petition and I sent one copy to you over there. Traffic is heavy and not safe at the entrance to our neighborhood at the intersection of Teague and Salem Crossing Road during school drop-off and pickup times. And there is a drawing on the first picture of your handout. While there has been a partial crosswalk painted on Teague this year, we feel a better solution is needed in this area. Parents often park on both sides of Salem Crossing Road before and after school waiting for their walking children. This creates a bottleneck. There is always a large traffic presence on Teague Lane with an entire line of waiting cars pulled over on the side of Teague, which is not a designated lane. People are then in turn, then try to turn in the turn lane to come into the neighborhood as well as attempting to turn into the school area from both directions. There have been numerous accidents at this intersection the last couple of school years. We have attached four of the traffic accident reports from this year that we ourselves have come across. I'm sure there are more. And in one accident, a resident from the neighborhood said that she had a collision because she was directed by the crossing guard to proceed, but that the accident still occurred because the crossing guard waved another person to go through the intersection since he was waving the stop sign. There has been property damage in the form of vehicles and a light pole which laid on the side, still with electricity going to it through an entire weekend with broken glass strewn about. This is all happening where our children are walking to and from school. The parking of vehicles on both sides of Salem Crossing creates a bottleneck and a narrow space for vehicles coming in and out of the neighborhood. And it makes it unsafe for our children to safely get to and from their homes. We have been getting complaints from homeowners that children are walking on their lawns up towards their homes throughout their flower beds. And that's because the area on the street is very narrow for the kids to cross there as we do not have sidewalks in the neighborhood. This issue is forcing them to walk through yards so they do not have to fear getting hit by a car. Today, we are proposing, along with the homeowners representing the majority of Salem Crossing neighborhood, by this petition, that no vehicle signs be placed on both sides of Salem Crossing Road. At first, we tried to go about the no parking signs, but then I spoke to Edgar, the city streets manager, and he said, the definition for parking is somebody that has not abandoned their vehicle, somebody that's close. So if we would use that as the reason or no parking signs, somebody could say, oh, I'm planning to move it and they're still gonna put their vehicles right there. And so we would like no vehicles between the hours of like drop-off and pickup time Monday through Friday. This, we need the cooperation from the police division to enforce this, and that's why we would like those no vehicle signs in this specific area. It, will this prevent parents from parking while waiting for their children? Probably not. I suspect parents are going to park down farther on Squires Lane, but it will open up the entrance of the neighborhood, making it safer cars to enter and leave while having a full field of vision around them so that they can cross and so children can cross. It will allow children to feel safe while walking home closer to the curb of the street rather than through people's yards. We have done our due diligence as a board. We've spoken to most of the homeowners in the neighborhood who are daily affected by this unsafe traffic problem. We have collected, collected some accident reports. I do know that Officer Bowden did a traffic study in March, on March 14th of this year after a management company reached out to him and he agreed with her that there was a problem and he would try to propose a permanent solution. We have reached out to the principal at Caleb's Creek School, asking them to verify that only the children of Salem Crossing and Haddington are walking. They suggested to the parents that they only park on one side of Salem Crossing Street, but there's no signage. And this doesn't help with the traffic congestion. And frankly, without well-defined parameters, people will forget or stop being compliant with unwritten requests. We need a solution for this intersection. We are asking you for your help, which would also mean that whatever solution is proposed or decided upon, the town of Kernersville will enforce it. This is our collective problem as citizens of Kernersville. Let's not wait for a serious injury or even a fatality to occur before we do something. Thank you for your consideration. Attached, you're gonna see a schematic of some, how crowded the intersections can get. This is all in your packets with vehicles. And then we do have a couple pictures just of how the traffic backs up all the way to Old Salem. It's a very congested intersection.
Can each of you come to the microphone and say your name so we know who you, we know who's who?
Hello, my name is Christine Austin and the secretary of the board with How Much.
Hi, I'm Claudia Falcon. I'm in 1404 Kayla Circle, Kernersville, and I am a member-at-large at the board.
Hi, I'm Nora Yala. I'm part of the board also, and I live in 1316 Salem Crossing Road.
Thank you. Thank you for your excellent presentation. If y'all wanna take a seat, I think we've got some questions of our staff at the moment. Doran, do you have a moment to come forward? So Edgar is the.
Street superintendent.
Street superintendent and he is a fantastic employee for the town of Kernersville. We're very glad that we have him. And Doran is his supervisor who supervises streets and the other divisions of public services. So Doran, the DOT limits the kinds of messages we can put on street signs and warning signs and that sort of thing. So what would your recommendation be for the signage? I'm not sure, is, is no vehicles one of the allowed?
We would have to, we would probably have to create an ordinance for that because currently we don't have one in our system. Currently, our only ordinance is curb restrictions, which is no parking.
We, we have an ordinance, kinda have an ordinance that will pick it up.
So would it say no stopping and no parking?
It would say no stopping or parking because ordinance reads basically where it's, where parking is prohibited, says no person shall stop, stand or park a vehicle. And then it's got some other stuff in any of the following places. And number 14 is at any place where official signs prohibit stopping. So I think if we put one up, said no stopping or parking here to corner and put it somewhere down Salem, Salem Drive, I think that we covered probably, wasn't it?
Which ordinance is it?
That is in section nine dash 144 in the Code of Ordinances.
Okay.
Yep, so we've got one that prohibits stopping. You just need an official sign-up that says no stopping or parking and then it's prohibited, I think.
With, but with an action from this board telling us to install it.
Do we need to do a written ordinance or since we already have an ordinance, can we just give a, a vote to instruct him to install that?
I think, and Chief wants to enforce it, if they give a motion to erect the sign, then you could go out and enforce it based on that code, correct?
All right, I'll bring it, Chief next. Did you have anything else to advise us as to this?
We've analyzed that situation too, and it, it is a dangerous, Curtis mentioned, our garbage trucks have trouble turning in. We've taken pictures at different times of day during drop-off and pickup at school and it is hazardous.
Okay, thank you, Doran. Chief, if you can, or Curtis can hand you a microphone so we can all hear you and including the, the you two. Now how could you, and what would you suggest as far as enforcing this or working with the school to let parents know that this is going to be enforced?
Well, we always try to get voluntary. Well, we always try to get voluntary compliance first, so we would let the principal know and her staff, so they could send something out to the parents. I think it would be fair to give it a short amount of time for that, and would have an officer out there reminding, and then after maybe a couple weeks, then we would start doing the fines and enforcing.
Do we have a good relationship with the administration at that school?
We do.
Okay. All right. I guess we don't, do we have any flashing signage we could put out there that's like a, like a, something we could put right away? I'm sure that one of the homeowners along there would give us permission. You know, like, we had that sign downtown that was like...
Yes, we do, but unfortunately, on that road, every time we put one of our radar trailers or something out there, it gets totally destroyed, vandalized. We have a brand-new one right now that we just took from out there a couple weeks ago. They got completely destroyed. Have to, we had to purchase a new one.
Okay.
So that's the second time it's happened out there, so I'm very hesitant about putting any more of our equipment out there like that.
So it's not, it's not an effective location for that kind of signage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, does board members have any questions, comments, discussion? I really appreciate, I know that Ms. Nagel had to leave, and she had told me that she would need to leave, so that's fine, but I'm really glad, I know it's late, I'm glad you all stayed to present this. I'm sorry that the procedures of our meeting made it so that you weren't the first thing on the agenda. Did you have a question?
Yes.
Come forward to the microphone, so we can all hear you.
Okay.
I was about to ask the board to vote to, to instruct our town manager to have these signs placed for you.
Okay. One of the things that I was wondering is, isn't a solution also, or part of the solution, to put flashing lights on both sides of Teague, so people will lower a little the speed? The speed limit on a school time is 35 mile per hour. In Florida, it's between 15 and 20. Teague, they come really fast, and we have people turning left, people turning right, people going across, and children crossing. Caleb Elementary, some teachers bring the kids to the street, so the parents wait on the other side of the street. We don't even have a crossing path with lines there. So what is the town of Kernersville policy on the speed on the school zone?
So it's interesting you bring that up, and it was a few years ago, and I would be certain you wouldn't be aware of this, but the speed limit through there actually was a lot higher than 35, and the town petitioned it to be 25, and 35 was all the NC DOT would allow. So we could revisit that as well.
We, we have talked to DOT, and so you'll know, that's the North Carolina Department of Transportation. That's their road. So we don't have any authority over it. We can just ask them to change it. We have asked them recently, I think probably in the last year or so, this issue came up, and at that point, they've still refused to lower it any lower than 35.
Could we send them, contact them again? The board could do a resolution at our next meeting, and we could include some of the photographs and the information public services have collected and the information that, from the presentation tonight?
Certainly.
Okay.
And also the flashing lights. I know that they work somewhere else, because you see the flashing green light during the school hours only. So people are supposed to drive with caution there, and also respecting the speed limit. That will help. It will not help the cars parking, but also will help towards the safety of the kids.
We can look into that as far as, as included in that. If you could include that too, Curtis. The crosswalk's a little more difficult, because just having the lines painted on the ground doesn't ensure safety, so you can have a crosswalk, and it's still not the best situation for children.
We have a cross guard also, but I think the lights maybe reduce it the speed a little after the, or between the lights during school hours. It will help the cross guard. One cross guard was run over before in that corner. So we don't want to lose one of the kids in our neighborhood, because we will have to live with that every day.
Certainly. We certainly, we understand and really appreciate your concerns and are very grateful that you brought this to us. And you're, I'm sorry that Ms. Nagel had to leave early, but your presentation and the materials you prepared are excellent. So we really appreciate kind of this comprehensive point of view you've presented tonight.
Yeah, and please count with us, and I speak for the other boards of the member, I speak for myself, and anything, any help or anything that you need from us and neighbors, we're willing to collaborate.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe get the word out to your neighbors not to stop or stand or park there, because eventually they're going to get a ticket, so.
Yes.
But, does any board members have any comments? All right. Thank you again for your presentation, and if there's nothing further, we'll move on to the next agenda.
Madam Mayor, I've got a question.
We've got to vote first, I'm sorry.
I need to ask one of them, because I'm not out there all the time. How far back, how far from the intersection would you recommend going back with no parking, like 150 feet or something, to Squires Lane, just right before you get to Squires Lane?
Are you asking how far it is?
No, how far back should we, because the sign will say no stopping or parking from here to corner.
Yes, there's only two, on the right-hand side of the tree, uh, street, there's only two houses, and all the way down to the end of that, where those houses are, is Squires.
Yep.
And that's, that's where we feel like it needs to be, down to that.
All right, I got you. Okay, yeah, I've got it pulled up on the map here.
Yeah, that goes along with my question. So is it going to be on both sides of the street on Salem Crossing?
That's up to the board.
That's what we're asking.
Stay for a few minutes, so we can vote.
Got it. Yeah, so we're asking from Teague to Squires, and from both sides of the lane. Thank you.
It's not too, it's not too long. It's probably less than half a block.
Okay, we can always make it less if it ceases to be a problem, I feel sure, but do I have a motion, or do we need to discuss what the motion would be further? I've got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson to install no, no stop, no parking or stopping, no stopping or no parking signs for, did you say it's 100 feet? From Teague Lane to Squires Lane.
On both sides?
On both sides of the road. And we're instructing, or we're directing the town manager to help us work with the NC DOT as to the speed and the signage for the school zone.
Let me clarify, do you want that no parking and stopping to be at certain times of the day during the week? Because if you make it all the time, and these folks that live there park out there, they're going to get a ticket also. So from... So we need to set it from like 7:00 AM to 8:30, and then from 2:00 to 3:30 or whatever? Okay. All right. Monday through Friday only?
Yes.
Do you want to set those specific times?
I will have to go out there.
Knowing that the school system may change the school hours.
We can change our signs if we need to.
Yeah, we'll go out and figure out the hours.
Okay, during school hours, which are currently...
You won't be able to put on the sign, no parking or stopping during school hours. You'll have to put the specific hours, just like they do on the speed limit 25. You'll have to set a time in the morning, you'll have to set a time in the afternoon. We just need to figure out what time that is.
So our motion is for signage instructing no parking or no stopping and no parking during designated hours, and our ordinance would be that it's school hours. So we could change the hours later if we needed to, if school hours change?
Correct.
Okay. During that, for that distance from Teague to Squire?
To Squire.
Have I left anything out? On both sides of the road. Thank you, JR. Is that your motion? And who's seconding it? Alderman Barrow is seconding. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get them out there as soon as possible. We may have to get some signs printed, and with the NC DOT, it may take a couple months working with them, and they may not give us the answer we want, but we can try again later if they don't. We'll keep asking. I think the speed was originally 55 through there, so it's taken a while to get it to 35, but we recognize and appreciate your concerns. I've been concerned about that for a while. I'm sorry that it has gotten to this point where it's so congested there that there's no visibility anymore. Did you have something else for us?
Yes, the motion said during school hours, we mean during drop-off and...
Yes.
Just making sure not the entire school.
Yes. During drop-off and pick-off, and we're going to check with the school, their bell schedule, and when people are starting to get there, you know, for dropping off and picking up, and adjust the range accordingly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Morgan, who had the motion in the second on that?
It was Chris had the motion. John Barrow had the second. Because Chris said, so moved and was asking for suggestions from everybody exactly how to word it.
Thank you for the suggestions.
You're welcome.
And Curtis as well.
I'd like to do our resolution to the NC DOT at the December meeting, if possible. I know it's a little tighter window with the Thanksgiving holiday, and that this is the 12th of the month, but if we can, that'd be great. If not, January. Yes. Or school zone. I'm not sure what's out there right now. I didn't think they were flashing, but there may be school zone signs.
I think there's about, at Haddington, there is a, one of the caution signs that says school crossing ahead, and then as you get closer, there's another one that drops the speed limit. But to my knowledge, Doran or Chief might know, are there any flashing? I don't think there's any flashing signs out there.
I thought the one near Kernersville Middle School has a light, and it's like solar-powered.
It's got a, it's got a flashing light at Kernersville, at Kernersville Elementary and at Kernersville Middle, both.
So I think that style sign is...
And I think the town paid for the one on Pine Grove Road at Kernersville Middle School.
We did.
Yep, but they have not, they've not been real willing to even let us pay for the one on Teague Lane out there. I don't know why, but they're correct. I mean, they've had one crossing guard got hit either last year or this year, one. And if it was last year, they might got hit again this year, because I saw them might get hit.
I feel like before, it was, there wasn't as much development in the area, and the road network wasn't very good, but now more roads are being built in the area, and there's significantly more development than when we followed up on that before.
You've got, Haddington has been just about finished out, and you've got one, two, three phases of Caleb's Creek that have been built out, and part of Brunswick that's out there now that was not out there probably five years ago. So there's a, and not everybody, but a big majority of the traffic comes that way, so they can hit Old Salem Road and go over to Interstate 40.
Catherine, can you give him some development numbers that we can include in this request to NC DOT?
Yes.
So I think we did, you know, it would have been nice if NC DOT had paid for the sign at Kernersville Middle School, but if, if our memory is correct and we did pay for it, we've gotten some value out of it, because they had to move it.
I think that's correct when they widened the road.
I watched them do it. So with the road widening, they had to move the sign, so we've had a free install.
That is correct. They'll have to move this one too, probably, if we put it in there right away, and they do something to, or the developer will. And I think that's part of their, part of their issue with maybe lowering the speed limit, is that there are supposed to be some significant road improvements done to Teague Lane at some point in the future, especially that far up with the intersection. And so they've been reluctant to lower the speed limit for that reason, but there's nothing that says you can't lower it and raise it back.
Well, we get a situation with that, all the conflicts and the trash trucks. Doran, is there any way we can work on the scheduling, so that the trash trucks may not be in that vicinity as much during those pickup and drop-off hours? Okay. I know that's a little difficult, because everyone will say, "Why didn't my trash get picked up yet?" But... Okay, and just to repeat, he said, Doran said that we would have to look at our schedule and see what we could do. Anything further on this? All right, let's move on then to item C, which is a four-way stop at Timberview Drive and Birch Ridge. Mr. Swisher?
We received this request from an individual citizen that lives in the area, over in Timberview and Birch Ridge. Currently, Timberview Drive is the, is the road that has the stops. It's a two-way stop. Birch Ridge goes straight through, and Birch Ridge is the one that you turn on with the pool zone, that goes from where the pool is all the way up to, what's the road that it, that it? Selwick. Edgar's went out and looked at it. He's not recommending a stop on Birch Ridge, because Birch Ridge is mainly the thoroughfare is through there. You wouldn't want to stop, that's the busy one, you, you want that traffic to keep flowing. Timberview, as you go toward the pool, Timberview on the left, I think there's maybe 10 houses, 12 houses back in there, Christie Glen Court. On the right-hand side of Timberview, the folks that live back in Alderman Barrow and Alderman Apple's part of the neighborhood, they come up Timberview from there, if they don't go around by the pool. So, but Birch Ridge is the busier road there, and that's why there's no stop sign on it currently. You know, we don't really know that a stop sign there would really help with the speed in the neighborhood. It would certainly stop them right there at the, at the stop sign, obviously, but what we've seen, a good example is Tredagar. I think those folks came in and wanted a four-way stop. Right as you pull off Shield Road and get to the first intersection there in Tredagar, we put one up. It doesn't really slow them down from Shield Road to the stop sign. They actually go a little bit faster, so that they can make up for those few seconds that are stopped. And then, once they get through the intersection, they speed back up. Probably see the same thing on Birch Ridge, but it's up to the, up to the board, as to whether or not they want the four-way stop there. It was requested by one citizen. I don't know that, I don't think, did we, was it just the one? We didn't have anybody else in the neighborhood call about it, did we?
I don't believe so. I can't say if they were speaking just for themselves or on behalf of others.
So is it recommended by town staff?
It is not recommended by town staff, no.
So you would keep traffic on Birch Ridge free-flowing, and keep the existing stop signs on Timberview?
Correct. Yes. But that's entirely up to the board. I mean, my advice would be, since we only had one person call and request it, you might want to ask other folks in that area if they want one, because just as, I can tell you, just as soon as we put one up, those folks that did not want it, you'll hear from them. We experienced that on Lake Drive, when we put up a stop sign on Lake Drive, and it was, it was necessary because of a sight-distance problem. There's really not a sight-distance problem that I'm aware of at Timberview and Birch Ridge. So if you just put a stop sign up, you'll hear from the folks in there that didn't want it.
I've not heard from anybody down there. Have you, Bill?
I have not, and I would be opposed to stopping the free flow on Birch Ridge, because that is a thoroughfare, and I think it's more likely behaviorally for people to maintain a speed that if it had to be enforced, it could be enforced, but I don't think stopping on Birch Ridge is going to really resolve any problem that I know that exists. I know there's one, one neighbor over there that had complained about the speed on Timberview, but I really, I would not be in favor of doing Birch Ridge interruption.
All right, so do we just not take action, or do we vote to deny it?
If you don't take any action, then it, nothing happens. It just dials for lack of motion.
Okay. Would anyone like to make a motion on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to item D, ordinance for budget amendment three.
This is probably the shortest budget amendment you've had in the three years y'all sat here. The only item, we have one expenditure, it's a carry-forward expenditure for door-access control at Fire Station 41 and the Wellness Center. We have offsetting revenue for that as well, and then we have in some of our special funds, the Sewer Saddlement Residual Fund, Kernersville Creek Greenway Capital Project Fund, and the Recreation Center Capital Project Fund. We have some changes in those, but no major changes, no appropriation from our general fund in this budget amendment. Be glad to answer any questions. Be glad to answer any questions the board might have.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
Does that move?
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, moving on to E, a resolution for donation of a fire engine.
Madam Mayor, the board, as you are aware, the western part of the state suffered a lot of damage about a month ago from Hurricane Helene. Lot of fire departments up there volunteer and town departments, city departments, lost a lot of equipment. Some of that equipment was in the form of fire trucks. We have a 1995 Pierce engine that's in reserve right now. I think it's engine 47. Chief Alderman contacted me and asked if, if he thought it would, if I thought it would be a good idea to, to donate that to an agency in western North Carolina that might can need it. I told him that I did not have a problem with that because ultimately all we would do with it is probably put on gov deals and sell it. 95 model, about 30 years old, probably would not bring a lot of money. So in his opinion, my opinion, there's folks in western North Carolina that could use it a whole lot more than probably what we could use, what it would bring on gov deals. So you have a resolution before you to authorize the conveyance of that piece of equipment to one of the agencies in western North Carolina that would be in need of that.
Okay, any questions, any discussion? Do you have a motion?
I'd make a motion, Madam Mayor, to donate the, to donate that fire truck to western North Carolina.
I've got a motion by Alderman Barrow, second by Alderman Pennix.
Can I ask a question? Is it working?
Yes, sir.
It's our reserve, so.
Yeah, it's my turn.
It's a fair question. All in favor? It's unanimous.
All right, we'll get it in motion. Thank you.
Item F is consideration of appointments to the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. So I had a question come up from the audience. How would, if there's representatives from the various boards on it recommended, how would the other members of the planning board, Board of Aldermen, Board of Adjustment be involved in this process?
They're on it. Members, how would the other members?
Yes.
There will be like the citizens and some of those other folks, there will be, I don't know what you call them, but individual groups that will come in, meet with this committee as well. There's going to be.
We're in the process of reviewing the RFPs that we received and we received eight of them. And as part of the proposal that we put out or the request for proposals that we put out, we said we want extensive public engagement with this through various means. And so part of their response is to give at least a skeleton outline of what all they would be proposing. But we want it to be something that the public is very involved in, other members are very involved in of various boards and commissions. So I would imagine that we'll have steering committee meetings with the steering committee, but also focus group meetings with developers, with the Aldermen, with certain other groups to really hone in on opinions and desires for the future of Kernersville as well as public engagement through various aspects of our community. So that is something that we've recognized is a big need for this project is to have extensive outreach and opportunity for participation.
Okay. All right. So. Is there any more questions or discussion or do I have a motion to approve the appointment of the steering committee?
Does that move?
Got a motion by Alderman Pennix.
Second.
Second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. All right, item G, Mr. Swisher, that's the policy regarding the use of town networks and equipment.
Well, we are now adopting a policy that prohibits the viewing of pornography on town networks and devices. So you have in your packet, the resolution, it's got several bullet points stating the different aspects of that resolution. Basically what it boils down to is if, if you've got a town issued device, whether it be a phone, iPad, laptop, whatever it may be, you're not allowed to view pornography on that. And if you're on the town network on your private phone, you're not allowed to view pornography from the town network. There'll be some, from the side of the network, there'll be some difficulty in, in policing that. But we have firewalls in place and things like that to hopefully prevent that. We do have some guest Wi-Fi's throughout town that might be a little more difficult to police, but we will certainly do that, work on that best we can. So we are required, I think this is one that we're required to adopt, isn't it Keith?
Yes, and of course, you know, we already have personnel policy related to employees and board members have an ethics policy that they adhere to. But the state is actually requiring formal adoption of a policy this or very similar.
Yep, and we are required, starting annually in 2025, that's the next, about the third up, fourth up, last bullet point, starting annually in 2025, no later than August 1st. And in the format required by the state chief information officer, the town's chief information officer shall, shall report information to the state chief information officer on the number of incidences of unauthorized viewing or attempted viewing of pornography on the town's network. So not only do we have to prevent it, we have to report the number of attempts to view it. And as Mr. Hooker said, we already have this in place, basically in our personnel policy for all employees as well as the board members have it in place as well. So it's really not something, it's not something that we haven't already been doing. We've been doing it. We've just never had to report it, never had to officially adopt it, so.
Okay, do I have a motion to adopt this policy?
Does that move?
Got a motion by Alderman Apple, second by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, moving on to the consent agenda. All of these matters are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion with no separate discussion unless a board member or citizen so requests, in which event the matter will be removed from the consent agenda and considered under the following item. A, approval of minutes for September 3 closed session. B, approval of placeholder minutes. I know this is not a discussion of this, but a placeholder just is insert into the minutes that says a meeting was not held this night so that we don't search for it feeling like we lost it, you know, five or 10 years from now. C, approval of minutes for the October 1 regular meeting. D, consideration of a lease agreement with Kernersville Little Theater. And E for South County tax refunds. Would anyone in the audience like to see any of these items removed? Any board members? Curtis, Ed, anyone? All right, seeing none, do I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Does that move?
Got a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Thompson, second by Alderman Gorham, all in favor? It's unanimous. All right, Mr. Swisher?
I have nothing to report, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Powell?
I have nothing to worry either, Madam Mayor.
Do we have a closed session tonight?
Yes, we do.
Yes.
All right, matters to be presented by the mayor and board of Aldermen. We'll begin with Mayor Pro Tem Thompson.
I don't have anything, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Barrow?
I got a couple of things. Number one, I had somebody approach me about the, Curtis, this will be, you don't know what they're talking about, a turf field down at Ivy Redman. Fellow said that their group or something rented it from time to time and used it, and it didn't have a scoreboard on it. What was he talking about?
Like, none of the fields down there have a scoreboard on them.
Anyway, he said there's a turf field, nice turf field.
Yeah, there's a turf field, there's five fields, one of them's turf. We've never put, we, in the past, we've not maintained or we've maintained them. We've not managed those fields. Those fields have been managed by KSA. And so they've chosen not to put a scoreboard on any of them.
He asked me about it and I told him there was some brouhaha about who run that particular part of it. And I would inquire. So I'll go back to him and tell him to talk to KSA if he wants a scoreboard. He said that they'd raise money and pay for it, but.
Yeah, for, for right now, I'd probably just tell them to hold on.
Hold on, okay.
Yeah.
What we talked about earlier, is that correct?
Yeah, if, if the management and operations of those fields change, it might be that, that we put a scoreboard on there. They really honestly, and they've never, I guess, needed one in the past because they, I guess they've always just kept score by hand with the official writing down what it is. But he is correct, there's not a scoreboard on it or any of the other fields there.
Right.
Should we put him in touch with Ernie to talk about details though?
I wouldn't at this point, no.
Okay.
Thank you. I got one other matter. A fellow named Jose Aguilar at Dynamic Marble and Granite contacted me the other day. Said he's building a new building, Catherine, down there. And he was, you know, he got his architect on and he said that the town wanted him to pave the parking lot at the same time that he built the building and that they're putting a pipeline through there. And he wanted to wait till the pipeline was done before he paved the parking lot. I said, that makes sense to me. I said, I'll check into it. What's the deal?
The pipeline already goes through the site and I know that they are, Williams is expanding their pipeline and staff, planners and engineers met with him and representatives from Williams Gas last week and talked about what would need to happen. It is in our ordinance that when you expand a building, you have to meet the standards of the ordinance, which would include the parking. So we would probably need some more information on how long it'll be before Williams is done with the expansion there. But we have worked with him on some of the other site constraints that he'll need variances for because of that pipeline.
Right, he just, he felt like it was really wasteful to do the parking lot and then they put the pipeline in and make a big mess and then, and they'd go back and fix it. But it would, it makes common sense to you, don't it, to wait?
It makes sense. It just is going to depend on how long it is before Williams gets around to expanding their pipeline. Because if it's several years, then, you know.
I understand.
You know, it gets complicated.
Okay, thank you so much. If you check into that and let me know what the deal is. Thank you. That's all I got. Thank you. Oh, and I want to thank everybody for working on the pool. We need to work on that. We need to get our committee together, get to working on the pool. And the sidewalk down West Mountain Street, where are we at on that, Curtis?
They, I think they're still doing some preliminary design of it. The last I heard, that's what they were doing. I don't think they've started acquisition right away or anything yet. They have to do the design to know what right of way they need on it. So that's the first stage of it and that's what we budgeted for, I think in '23, '24 maybe.
Right.
So that's where they're at on that. And we are, talked to Ernie, we're looking at getting together some type of committee to work on the pool. Probably starting in December. Ernie's been pretty tied up with this building. So probably starting in December, doing some initial meeting to kind of look at what we budgeted for the pool.
Right.
What that kind of means in terms of where the pool can go with those budget constraints and all of that good stuff. I know there's some thoughts on several different locations, but there's some challenges with some of those that would increase that budget from what's been budgeted from 10.8 million to probably 13.8 or so.
Right.
So yeah, we're looking at, I talked to Ernie about it the other day, actually, probably in December sometime. Depending on the schedules with the holiday, it may get pushed back to January. But we're looking at that here shortly in the next month or so.
Good deal. Thank you for your good work. And Ernie, thank you for your good work. Ernie let us go down to his Recreation Center for our meeting last month and we toured it. Man, that place is some kind of cool. It really is. Y'all done a great job down there and quickly too. Yeah, made it happen. Thank you.
All right, Bill?
I want to congratulate and thank Chris Comer and the Chamber of Commerce for the hard work on the Veterans Day Parade. You have not been through, you have not ridden in a Veterans Day Parade until you've ridden in the car with the Grand Marshal, General Gorham. I learned cadences or relived cadences that I hadn't heard since 1972. And they were just as effective today as they were then. But you did a great job on the Veterans Day Parade. And, and on behalf of veterans, and I know General Gorham agrees with me here, we want to thank you for the recognition that you continue to give, the town continues to give for veterans. So good job. Thank you.
General Gorham?
Bill stole my thunder, but I just want to echo what he said. We had a ball, as you can no doubt tell. It's a very funny event. I think it's going to continue to grow as we continue to have those types of parades and whatnot. The weather cooperated and everything was just fantastic. So Chris, just keep up the good work. Our veterans need that type of recognition, you know, so thank you for what you do. And Bill was on the ride with you as well, sir. Okay, thank you.
And the support for the heroes welcome. Bishop McGinnis, oh my goodness, their singing and their musical talents to share with us. And. The, the food and the, the folks organizing the food and cooking the food and serving the food and decorating the shelter. I mean, it was just really well done. But I have to say, one of my favorite parts of it was seeing JR and Bill come in at the end of the parade. And this whole group of Cub Scouts had walked down to the, the parking lot on their way to get the donut holes after waving at the parade. And they were learning and singing the cadence along with General Gorham. So it was just a, a lot of fun and, you know, brought them into it, you know, brought, gave them that experience that they were participating in the parade and not just passively watching it. So that was very special too. So just, and I talked with some of the folks in the lineup to the parade. I mean, just a, a really good opportunity to honor some, some people who built our nation and who gave so much after their return from service. So we appreciate you, Bill, and you, JR, and all the veterans in Kernersville. Thank you for the idea of the parade, Chris, and your staff just executes it beautifully. We really appreciate it. All right. Do you have anything else, JR? Okay, Mr. Pennix? Mr. Pennix, I think we're going to need your help designing this plaque honoring the doctor. Okay. So do we have funds budgeted for that or would we need to do something to create the funding for that? I know there's a couple other plaques we're working on. There was one for Civitan Park that was underway and.
Now, we'll just have to see how much it costs.
Okay.
It won't be a large expense either way.
Okay. All right, I would like to hear more about the tree lighting. Ernie, if you have a moment to tell us when, where. For the Aldermen who came last year, it was utterly stunning. In talking with, talking with Santa Claus, he was impressed by the weather and the beautiful fog and how the lights twinkled and that sort of thing. So, and he assured be he and Mrs. Claus were planning to return again to Kernersville for the magic of lighting the tree. But I'd like to know more of the details about like where and when and what we can expect.
So the tree lighting is again the first Saturday in December, December the 7th. Right here at Town Hall, the tree will be put back up here in the circle of the courtyard. Tree will be lit at 7:30, like we did last year. We'll have our lanterns, our snow machines out again. We'll have the carolers and hot chocolate on the farmer's market and stage out. And then after that, we'll, you know, we'll have the blooms to bells going on. Again, correct? Yep. So we have the bell at the depot, we'll have the blooms at the garden and it'll be passed around and ice skating in the museum and all that be going on, so. With a trolley? With a trolley. So you can ride the trolley from spot to spot so that you can get to see everything without having to walk around downtown and miss anything, so.
It was really, the event was really well laid out last year. It was the first year in that location after, I'm really not sure how many years it was at Harmon Park, probably at least 30, maybe, maybe 45 or 50 even. But, but it was really well laid out in that location. And the large farmer's market was a great place for the hot chocolate and donuts and it allowed the crowd to disperse a little bit more so more people could enjoy it.
It was a much better layout. I mean, we got to use All Town Hall, you got to use Farmer's Market for the, for the hot chocolate and cocoa with the stars under, under the, under the shelter looked really great. So everything blended real well, so.
Some of my family members saw the stars being hung this year and thought they just looked spectacular. They're like, mom, mom.
Yeah, this was great. It was a good move.
So can you update us a little bit about the rec center?
So originally we were thinking of moving the. So originally, we were thinking of moving, having the grand opening on the 6th and make it a Christmas weekend. We ran into some issues with getting it open and final, you know. So anyway, moved it back to the 14th. So the grand opening will be in December the 14th from 4:30 to 8. We're looking at getting a list of VIPs together. So we'll have a VIP gathering from 4:30 to 5:30. And then we'll open for the general public for tours and questions at from 6 to 8.
Okay. So mark your calendars.
Any other question?
Any other questions, Ernie, while we have them? Thank you, Ernie.
You're welcome.
Appreciate your good work. I know it's been a lot with the gardens, which is the blooms, the...
The blooms are going to have a couple of changes this year. I know they've increased the number of blooms that they've made, but we've incorporated some, some new features to it this year. We've purchased a large arch for a photo spot and some new kind of decor items out to just kind of dress up some areas that are kind of dark that the handmade blooms or decorations didn't light up that well. So we've added some stuff to it. So it'll be some new things in there this year.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. I'm looking forward to the holiday season in Kernersville. And I appreciate, there were a lot of big issues discussed tonight. I appreciate everybody's studying the issues and bringing good considerations and concerns and the good discussion we had this evening on several of the agenda items. So I appreciate everybody's hard work on behalf of the citizens. That work continues, I believe, with a closed session. So if I have a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor, pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143.318.1183, I move that the board go into closed session to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney client privilege between attorney and the public body. Which privilege hereby acknowledged pursuant to A4 to discuss matters pertaining, I mean, relating to the location or expansion of industries or other businesses in the area, including agreement on a tentative list of economic development incentives that may be offered by the public body in negotiations.
Thank you, Alderman Gorham. I have a motion. And a second by Mayor Protem Thompson, all in favor. It's unanimous. This board is now in closed session. Thank you.
Welcome back to the regular meeting of the Kernersville Board of Aldermen. Is there any miss, any further business before the board this evening? Seeing none, can I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion by Mirko Tem Thompson, second by Alderman Barrow, all in favor? It's unanimous. This meeting is now adjourned. Have a happy Thanksgiving.